Mayor Rowan Dyke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel, Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith, City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
As Vice Mayor has previously mentioned, Alderman Smith couldn't be here because of health issue. Alderman Hansel had some personal issues he needed to take care of and could not be here either. So, but we do have a quorum and we're able to conduct the business of the city of Newport. In your package, you've received a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting from regular session September 9th of 2025. If you've had a chance to look those over, we entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Have a motion then to approve those minutes as presented, been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
May's have like sign. Hearing done, motion carries. No proclamations and no recognitions at this time. We'll now have our communications from the city administrator, Mr. James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few items this month. First of all, a piece of business we need to address as the council. The next council meeting in November is scheduled for November the 11th, which is Veterans Day. So, we have a conflict on that date as far as having the city council meeting. So, you all need to, you don't have to do it this second, but sometime tonight. You need to decide what you want to do about the November meeting. I think obviously we would have to, at the very least, reschedule it or at your discretion, just cancel it for the month. So, that is up to the prerogative of the board, but it's my duty to bring that to your attention, that before the night's over, we need to resolve that issue on what we're going to do for the November meeting. For the record, last year, prior to the flood, I was approached by the county highway department about the possibility of joining together with them and paving a portion of Carson Springs Road, which half of is in the city. Now, this is one of those weirdo deals that was done many years ago where we went up the street and took one side of the road into the city and took half the road. I would never recommend doing that, but we did that a few times in the past and it's created problems every time that we've dealt with it. Well, what we generally do when we encounter one of these places is we partner with the county and they pay for half the paving and we pay for half the paving of that strip of street. And so, when they talk to me and, and here's where I screwed up and I'll not make this mistake again, I didn't get anything in writing from them. We just discussed it. And my understanding was that it was going to cost $30,000 to pave it and we would be responsible for half of it, which would be 15. So, I checked with Ben and Ben had money in his budget to cover it and he said he was good with doing it. And so, we agreed to do it. Well, the flood happens and they, the paving happens. The paving is done and it's paved up just right past the overpass on the interstate right there where she used to be down at the HNU.
Topper Allen.
Topper Allen, yes, sir. Thank you. To Topper Allen's house. That's where the city limits go to. Topper's as far as the city goes, which is the first property past the overpass. And so, the flood happens and everybody forgets about it. So, the county pays it, but they don't send us anything on it. So, a couple, a few weeks ago, I get a call from the highway department saying, hey, you know, we forgot to bill the city for their half of this paving. And I said, well, okay, you know, no problem. Just send it to me. Well, they sent it to me and it was $30,000. Well, that was not my understanding. My understanding was, I said, I said, now, we're not paying the full amount. You know, that was the full amount. Oh, no, no, it wasn't. That's just, that's just your half. So, we checked with Hummel to see, you know, is that just half? Because it's not that long a strip of street. You know, we pave streets all the time in town and, you know, and that, to me, that still sounds like what it would cost to pave that entire section of street. It's, you know, because it's not very wide and, but anyway, and it's a cap, but anyway. So, being contacts Blaylock and they say, oh, yeah, that's half. So, well, I mean, I, you know, we had to pay it. I mean, we, you know, so that, you know, I just, for the record, I got to make you aware of that. That was something that was done last year in last year's budget, but we had to pay for it out of this year's budget. And so, you know, even when Tina and I talked about it, she didn't remember it being $30,000 our part. My understanding, like I say, my understanding was it was $30,000 to do the whole strip and we had to pay half of that. But they, everybody agrees, we owe, that was our half, was the 30. So, I just needed to put that on the record, that that has happened because the bill came in a year late, a year after it should have. And so, that throws Tina's books out of whack. And so, it needs to be on the record because of the amount what transpired. But I can guarantee you will not get into that mess again. We tried to get Joe Malone, who's the project manager for Blaylock, to bill us only for our half and bill the county for their half. Oh, no, that was going to mess his books up. So, then, what really got me when Ben checked with him and he said, oh, no, that was your half. And Ben said, well, that wasn't our understanding. And he said, well, y'all should have just split it and we can bill you. That's what we asked him to do, you know? But he, at that time, oh, no, that's what it's going to mess my books up. So, but then he suggested that's what we should have done, you know? Well, there you go. And I wish we'd thought of it. But anyway, that's for the record. And, you know, it is what it is, but I still, I mean, I guess if Joe Malone confirms it, maybe I just misunderstood when it was, when it was put to us. Maybe I just misunderstood. I mean, I'm human. But I swear, that wasn't, because Ben said that that wasn't what, that it was supposed to be in half that. Even Ben remembered that. So, I guess I screwed it up at the beginning if it's my fault because Blaylock backs them up, says, yeah, that's, that's just your half. Okay. I don't know if y'all have been hit with this and I don't know the answer to it. I'm just going, again, this is just to put it on the record. I've had, I know Connie has because he's called me about it, but I've had a couple of complaints in the past, well, week and a half now, about folks that have come in to pay their city property tax and their city property tax is higher than their county property tax number. One was $6 higher, one was $15 higher. Well, traditionally, forever, the city tax has been lower than the county tax for property owners inside the city. And I've explained to them, we didn't set that tax rate. The comptroller did. The comptroller set the county's tax rate and they set our tax rate. But why it's flipped the switch on that, I don't, I don't know. I don't know why our tax rates would basically be the same because that's what it would have to be for it to only be just a few dollars more at the city, $6 more at the city than it is the county. You'd basically have to have, except for a decimal point or something, you'd basically have to have the same tax rate. I haven't, I haven't checked to see what the county tax rate is, but that's just odd and I have no explanation for it other than the comptroller set the tax rates. And why now that, and I say, it's only a small amount, the two that have talked about it, $6 and $15, but still, it's been a big issue. It's never been that way. It's never been that way. What's going on? What have y'all done? Well, you know, we didn't do anything. I don't, have y'all looked, have y'all looked at yours?
I haven't gotten my county.
I just got my county a couple of days ago.
It went up $100 more than the county. Both of them went up.
Mine went about 30%.
Mine went up, the little city went up 198, mine went up 100. So, mine went up 30%.
But is the county, is the cities more now than the counties?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I have no explanation for that. I don't know because we didn't do it.
Is there anyone at the comptroller's office that we could reach out to and ask why this happened?
That is a Tina question.
It stems from the reassessment of property. It was our turn to do that. They do it every five years for this county. And they valued everybody's house incredibly high. Some of them doubled. And this, what the comptroller does is just a mathematical calculation. They take the total amount of money that we got last year and they back into what we are needing to be getting this year so that we do not make more money or less money. That's where the rate come from.
And it's supposed to do the same thing for the county.
Yes, it does.
If everybody's taxes went up 25 to 30%, then we are going to be actually generating more money.
No.
No?
They dropped our tax rate.
Yeah, our tax rate went down.
Our tax rate went down quite a bit. So...
But Luanna is correct, though. If everybody's tax money went up, then the city would be collecting more. So theoretically, somebody's should have went down.
They could have did.
All said.
They're not going to complain.
They don't complain.
You got to get the same amount of money.
Well, I've got an answer for that.
Yeah.
The commercial property did not go up.
As much, no.
Because, yeah, but it still doesn't change the dynamic that how is it that the city and the county all of a sudden have the same tax rate, basically? You know, that's, that's the anomaly.
Well, I think that commercial will factor into that.
Well, it's possible.
And answer that question.
Well, it's possible. There's more.
Well, everybody's complaining.
There's more commercial in, yeah, there's more commercial in the city than there is, you know, I mean, I don't know if you add up all the convenience stores, but, you know, but businesses, Walmart, Lowe's, all those are in the city.
Then that makes sense, makes it make sense as to why the city is higher now.
And those people are complaining.
No, because theirs is still, theirs went down.
Theirs went down.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'm not complaining. I'm...
Commercial, we've only, we've only had two to complain.
Well, I've had a lot of complaints. I've heard a lot of people complain.
I don't have to like it, but I'm not complaining.
We have heard your comments, but it is typical for a city to be more. It was unusual for Newport to be less than the county because the city provides more service. You would expect to pay more when you get more. So...
But I just wanted, again, this was mostly for the record, that to make people know we're aware of it. And we don't have an easy explanation for it. I mean, we know what, we know what has transpired, but, you know, while, you know, without doing the math and or getting in with the comptroller's office and asking him for a breakdown, I mean, I mean, it would be logical that having more commercial properties, bigger commercial properties in the city, that that could have caused the residential rates to go higher to offset all those commercial businesses, properties in the city. That's the only feasible explanation there is for it, but I can't give you a definitive explanation for it. But it's becoming an issue. And I knew if it was for us, I knew it was for you all because if they see you all out, they're going to gripe to you just like they do when they come in the lobby. So, I just wanted to make y'all aware of the issue and to go on the record that we are aware of the issue, but we don't know exactly why that is and that we didn't do it. You know, the state did it. Okay, the last thing I've got, I'm going to call on Gary to come up and talk about a little something that we've been working on for several years. Gary worked on it for years. Monica come along and was helping him a little bit. Gary left for a while. Monica took it over. Gary come back and the two of them got it to the finish line. So, I'm going to turn it over to him and let him tell you about it.
Well, I think everybody's been here either as a city employee or as a city elected official for long enough that you can remember talking about either the Tennessee downtowns program that we started in 2018 and the process to go through that. And that was to get to the end game goal of to become a Tennessee Main Street community. There are 49 of them. There were before, a couple of weeks ago, by the end of August, there were 48 Tennessee Main Street communities in Tennessee. And you try to achieve that status because there are a large number of grants, state and federal, that go through the Main Street program that now Newport becomes eligible for, including a downtown improvement grant that is one of the few that can go to a private business owner. And those are, those are big chunk, $100,000. They were facade grants before, if you've ever read in the paper or seen online about other cities getting state facade grants for downtown buildings. Elizabeth then ripped off about $400,000. Not ripped off, that's a bad way to put it. They managed to obtain about $400,000. They did it legit. About $400,000 worth of improvement grants for their downtown, different businesses. The fellow, his name's Jeremy Puckett, he was on the board in Sevierville. He came up at our planning commission meeting and spoke because I'm pretty sure Chairman Gillen asked, why would you want to be in the Main Street program? And that was the week we did Shine On and I was too tired to explain it. So, Jeremy was here. He's actually on the board in Sevierville. Hops up, explains how a lot of their buildings in downtown that they did over the past couple of years were the downtown investment grant. That, that was a lot of private sector investment, but it wasn't necessarily 100% funding on their part. And private sector investment is the thing that we were lacking here. So, the downtown has been a project for years now. And, you know, if Alderman Hansel will hear, he would tell you that he, he would love for it to happen overnight, but he's realized that it just takes time. And so, our private investment that we put in, our storm drainage work and some of the other things we've done, it leveraged private investment. So, that is, that's how you move the ball forward with this. And the Tennessee Main Streets program, which I've got to sign over here, but that opens us up to so much, so many resources. And it's a prestigious, too. It's a feather in our cap that, you know, we're the 49th. There's a lot of cities, there's a lot of municipalities in Tennessee that aren't Tennessee Main Street. So, there's a lot of work and it's just, it's not the end of the game. We've not won yet. There's still a long way to go. We're still behind. But it, you know, we've scored, we've scored a touchdown and we're closer to taking the lead at this point. So, this is the big, if everybody was at the kickoff event for Shine On, this is, this is a freebie. We got to buy another one if we want to put a second one or a third one up. But this is our official welcome to the club sign. And, you know, it's just a start. So, we'll, of course, keep you updated on everything that comes out of this. The consultant with the, with Tennessee Main Street was here doing our board training for our Main Street board earlier. And that's where Monica is actually. They're still having a meeting. But she was talking about sort of just what, all of the impact that, that all these other towns and cities have seen once they get into the Tennessee Main Street program. So, siding time, still a long way to go, but that's one step closer, darn it. So, it took a minute, but we're, we're getting there. That's all. That's all I think.
Thank you, Derek.
Good job.
Congratulations.
This was something that came out of one of the governor's economic development conferences we went to several years ago. And I attended one of the, one of the little breakout sessions and that's what it was about, how to become a Main Street community. And Gary and I talked about it and I told him I wanted us to try to make that happen. And he said, well, it's, you know, like he said right there, that doesn't happen overnight. And I said, well, we got to start somewhere. So, we've been working on it ever since. He, like I say, he's worked on it. Monica worked on it. And then they got it to the finish line together. And so, I'm proud of the job they've done to get us there. There was a lot involved. It wasn't just go sign up and it happens. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, I have something to get. I'm not open to flood the council members. It gets a lot of questions. What's going on in the rest of the Newport Dry Goods building? What's going to happen with FUD's area and...
Far at the end of the West Main Street down where they're demoing the...
Ryan Clock Company.
Yes. Okay. So, we're going to extend Main Street at the Clock Company down to Cope Boulevard and then connect where downtown sort of ends down to Cope. And that's just Phase 1. I've got, I've got, you know, with magic markers on maps, different, different road systems. We can break off into that, but that's, that's happening right now.
That'll be the police department close to the...
Close to Cope. That's, that's where we...
And the animal shelter will be somewhere in that vicinity.
Be right beside it.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything going where it's being tore down, the old Ryan Clock Company?
The developer, Mr. Daniel Conard has a developing, development partner out of Florida. They're looking at, because basically they're getting, they sold us out of, I mean, of course, they made money on their property, but it was still a very good price because they were getting, they're getting Main Street frontage out of, out of this project. So, they don't have anything locked in yet, but they're going to have very valuable property right on the new, newest, brightest, shiniest part of Main Street. And as soon as he brings us any sort of development or concept plan, of course, you guys will know about it, but nothing set in concrete there, but we're creating economic opportunity by building that road. Easy answer over here is there's a concept for Steakhouse and more boutique, smaller hotel. They're calling them suites, which that'll be the second, third floor of the Dry Goods building. So, just overnight stays. And there's an adventure outfitter, retail store that they've got earmarked to go into the building. I'm pretty sure closest to the flower shop. Over here on McSweene, which is not one you ask about, but it's the same development group. They've got on the door, it was, it's going to be a candy and sweet shop. They're thinking they're going to move that concept over to next to Pizza to the Cove. And this will be something different. They're not sure yet. And we are still working on the redevelopment of, from McMahon to Woodline. That was, that was, that's where we're getting into the reinvestment incentives for the demolition on the buildings that cannot be saved. And I got a phone, I'll actually, I can tell you more in a minute. I got a phone call a second ago on that, which I didn't answer, but you'll tear down the worst there and then build back. And we were talking about it in our...
FUD's old place.
Yes, sir. Yes. Yeah, that, the video rental, there's an empty lot next to it. It's part of that development. And then the two buildings down to the corner that Mr. Woods owns. His is still in good shape. I think his will stay.
The one on the corner?
Yes, sir. Because I was talking to a demo expert about how to make sure that building stays upright whenever they start knocking out or around it. So, he had a good idea and I think it's going to work out. But then they'll come back in. The plan is to build back with something that looks like it was there the whole time. So, it wouldn't just be a new flashy, modern design. It would be something more classic looking. But, and we'll get a say in that because our, the, the reinvestment dollars going towards that, the council still gets to approve the concept on it before we approve the money handed out.
And how about the First Baptist Church?
That is the group that Michelle Lane works for. She wants to, she wants her group to purchase it. Jeff Green is trying to get an investment group together to purchase it. And the discussion has been on it so far to save what can be saved. I don't think the middle part can without it being, without, it would not be cost effective to try to save the middle part. But early, we need a parking structure and some, and it would be possible to do something there. So, we could possibly do public-private partnership with whoever that investor is and create some more, create needed parking spots for downtown. But that's, we'll figure that one out when we get there. But that one's not settled yet. That's just, people are looking at it. It's not just a no one wants to touch it kind of thing yet. So, we're trying to, we don't want it to sit there for several years like some of these other structures had. And that's why you got a demo, some of them over here, because it just, they're too far gone.
Like the old school thing. And what about the two lots of cities sold some developers on the other side of the railroad track where the old mill used to be?
We got that back.
Oh, yeah. The option ran out.
Yeah. We still, we maintained, they didn't meet their requirements, so they didn't get it.
Yeah. And Mr. Nayland has found a piece of property that is for sale now. So, we're looking at, working with Daryl on that to get him where he wants to go so we can relocate him off the riverfront. And then the city went on with the entire, everything on the other side of Faze building. And then, then we figure out what we want to do there.
Yeah. I've been meaning to ask you, did they get to close their deal with Christie Woo?
It's still pending. I think there's some asbestos testing and things like that they're still working on. So, it's, it got extended because of, because of that.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
I'd like to add something to this Main Street program. Over the years, I've been fortunate to go to a lot of these meetings in Nashville for different organizations. TML, Governor's Rural Opportunity Summit, and see these award shows that they have, all these cities that are winning all these awards. Almost every one of them are tied to this type of program, Tennessee Main Street. And so, I'm really enthusiastic and glad that we're being, going to be a part of that. I think it's going to make a big difference in downtown. So, congratulations again, guys, for all that, all your work you put in, you put into it.
Mayor, before we move on, I'm sitting here looking at my calendar and thinking about what James said about next month. One option I think would be to basically postpone the meeting until December, subject to having a call meeting if business needs to be taken care of. I'm not appreciating that, but it's an idea to put out there. It seems to me it'd be hard to come up with a date with, basically without two council members here.
And all the holidays beginning.
And Thanksgiving and all, but that's an idea.
I agree. Are you making a motion?
No, I can't. I can't, Thursday.
Pardon me?
If we're in that process, I'll make a motion.
I think we could.
Yeah, I don't think you have to have a vote on it. I think it can be, if they're in concurrence, I think that can be your call unless the city attorney would disagree with that.
No, I think the mayor can make that call.
It's a dead deal. All right.
Done deal.
Dead deal.
Thank you.
We will postpone.
We will. We will get that advertised.
Okay. There are no meetings in November. We'll postpone till December. Make it official. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment for the planning commission. Mr. Jim McSweene's term.
Yes, Mr. McSweene handed you, Mayor, his resignation. He just felt that he still, he still is going to forget more about planning stuff in Newport than I'll ever, I'll ever absorb knowledge on. But he said with his, his hearing not being great, he didn't feel like it was fair for him to continue to serve on the board. So, he resigned and he's, and we asked around, I thought it'd be good to have an attorney, replace an attorney. So, Jeff Green's daughter Alexis is the recommendation from the staff that deals with the planning commission.
Okay. Heard, heard presentation. What's the board's opinion?
I'll make an exception.
Have a motion on the board. Alexis, what's her last name?
It's Green. It's Mr. Jeff's Green's daughter.
Yeah.
Yeah. She just moved back to work in his new law office.
Yeah, I understand. She's taken over most of the buildings.
That's what he says, yeah. He's supposed to have one office and I think she now has claimed three.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion on the board there. It's been properly seconded to accept Mrs. Alexis Green as a replacement for Mr. Jim McSweene's term on the planning commission.
And that's the end of an era.
Yes.
And Mayor, we need to do something for the commission.
Yes, we do. We do. We've talked about that at planning commission, too. All in favor?
Aye.
May's have like sign. Hearing done, motion carries. Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And Mr., I might add, Mr. McSweene has told me that if he's ever needed for any special opportunity, that he will be glad to be here if we need him. So, he's not completely going away. Item 7, reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. We have none at this point. Item 8, whole business and unfinished business. Item 8 is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2025-13, budget amendment for the City of Newport.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2025-13, and ordinance, excuse me, amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2025-2026.
Heard the presentation. Well, I think we need a roll call, don't we?
We need a...
We need a motion. Give me a motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Last Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-14, budget amendment for the Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2025-14, and ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2025-2026 for Newport Grammar School.
First, the board's pleasure?
Yes, to the board.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-14, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. It has been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Last Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-15, amending title and alcoholic beverages, chapter 4 permits, adding section 4-413, golf course regulations.
Well read, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-15, amending title and alcoholic beverages, chapter 4 permits, adding section 4-413, golf course regulations. It has been properly seconded. Need a roll call.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Last Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of resolution number 2025-15, plan of service for West Highway 2570, tax map 045024.00.
That's motion, that's, that's, that's five?
Is that a business or?
Uh...
Gary's going to... That's, that's the lot right at the interstate ramp at the 432. If you're, if we're headed, if we got in the car and drove out there right as you get on the interstate, it's a lot next to it. It's owned by Kenny Patel, and he wants to do a multi-use commercial and, yeah, commercial development there. And he wants to be annexing because he wants city services. Yeah.
There's going to be housing, too, right? Like apartments?
Yeah, yes. Yeah. I started to say residential in my brain style because I was like, does he have resi-, yeah, he's got apartments on the back.
Yeah. It was a little bit of everything.
Yeah. Yeah. It's definitely a mixed use.
Yeah. But now, it may not all be done in one swoop. It might be done in phases. But there was three separate phases to it. Well, one of, one of the components was condos.
Okay. Heard the presentation. We have a motion. Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of resolution number 2025-15, plan of service for West Highway 2570, tax map 045024.00. Has been properly seconded. All in favor? Signify by aye. Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. New business, consideration of resolution number 2025-17, driver's safety grant.
This, well, I will on behalf of Missy. I usually put it out there for, for many years. I applied, I did the application when I was a safety director, so I'm very well familiar with it. This is an annual, or I don't, this may be the semi-annual grant that the PEP Public Entity Partners, formerly TML, makes available to their members to promote their safety program. This portion is used to take all of the city employees who drive a city vehicle and run their driver's license to make sure that they've got a clean license, that their license, nothing has happened in the last year or two years that would cause the license to be restricted or suspended, that everybody's operating with a valid license. You know, you like to think that if that occurred, you'd know about it, but not necessarily, and people don't always come and tell you about it. So, the insurance company likes to make sure that everybody operating a vehicle, that they're insuring, has a valid license. So, this grant will pay for that, to run all 100-plus employees that drive city vehicles.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to the board.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of resolution number 2025-17, driver's safety grant. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B is consideration of resolution number 2025-18, plan of service for West Highway 2570, tax map 046098-00.
Guys, we're popular. This is yet another request for annexation. That lot is the old Woodso Drive-In. I don't have anything on it, like, there's no NDA or anything, so I can't, I don't know what's going to go on there, but the developer was interested before they bought the lot. And, because actually, Mr. Homel has requested the annexation per the request of the potential buyer. So, I don't even know who the buyer is. But that, that's where we're at, and I will ask you to regard, on the resolution as written, it says the public hearing's going to be on the 11th. So, since we're not going to meet, I will amend that for the December meeting. But that would be the only difference in what you'd be voting on.
Okay. Heard the board, uh, heard the presentation. Board's pleasure, please.
Motion to the board.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion then on board then to approve consideration of resolution number 2025-18, plan of service for West Highway 2570, tax map 046098.00. Has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Gary, this has not been annexed yet, correct?
Correct, yeah. This is just first steps.
Item C is consideration of resolution number 2025-19, abandoned enclosure of alley off Lakeview Street.
Okay. If you guys want to look at the map there, this is a public ride. It shows the public right-of-way that goes into the property where the Elm Hill Manor sits on the back side off of Lakeview. The owner has requested the closure and then the quitclaim deed to them. They use it as their private drive anyway. Per state law, we reached out to the, they're not 18, Bell South Building that's right next door. They don't have an access off of it. It's a fenced-in portion that borders it. Asked them to respond if they had any issue with the quitclaiming to the single property owner, because typically, we would close and then divide it 50/50. And if you, if you give it all to one, you have to solicit the adjoining property owner, and we've received no communication from Bell South. Staff recommends to approve. That's part of their, the, they're replating everything up there as part of the auction to sell the, the property.
Cento Carpenter Place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Heard the presentation. Board's pleasure?
Motion to the board.
Second.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion on the board then for consideration of resolution number 2025-19, abandoned enclosure of alley off Lakeview Street. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item D is consideration of resolution number 2025-20, accepting governor's response and recovery funds for Park to Float.
Uh, this program was announced back in, I think, late July, early August. The timeline to put anything in was very fast, and we put in for, I think, four projects: police station, Park to Float, and two smaller things that I can't really remember. But we got awarded, we were one of only two local governments to get awarded anything. They put a lot of money toward private business and farmers, which is good. I'm not saying that it was, it's a bad thing, but we were one of only two governments to get awarded funding. Majority of the funding is for Park to Float. Terry, can you read the amount out off of the orange sheet? Because I don't know it off the top of my head.
Two hundred eleven thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty dollars.
Yeah. That's the amount of money we were awarded, and just asking that we vote to accept that. There is no match. It's just, it's a straight-up award to us to rebuild, help rebuild Park to Float.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to the board.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to, for consideration of resolution number 2025-20, accepting governor's response and recovery funds for Park to Float. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item E is consideration of closing Main Street for Boo Bash. Okay.
This sounds like a joke, right?
I'm glad I didn't say it real fast.
I had four real ones, and then the last one's a joke.
CJ's not here, is it?
All right. This is a joint effort between Cock County Sheriff's Department and local Main Street Group. It's a, they do an event over on the courthouse lawn. That's what CJ coordinates. The rest of the stuff Monica takes care of. But for safety of the kids as they, and the parking and all that, it's best to shut down Main Street here, all the way down to Court, just on the other side of the track. So, that's all we're asking for. It's the 28th, which is the Tuesday before Halloween. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Presentation.
I'll make a second.
All right. We have a motion on the board for, for consideration of closing Main Street for Boo Bash. It has been properly seconded. Say that five times.
Boo, Boo Bash. Boo Bash.
It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye. And nays have like sign.
All right. I'll sit down. Thanks, guys.
Hearing none, motion carries. Item 10 is bids, purchases, expenses, and consideration of bids for a ladder truck for the fire department.
Good evening, board. I'm bringing you today a proposal to purchase a new ladder truck for the fire department. I dare say, we have the very best 32-year-old ladder truck probably in the state of Tennessee. I promise you that. But it is getting way beyond standards of times that we, to have them. And fire trucks are very, very expensive, and they're getting more and more expensive. So, we're, we're looking to purchase an E1 Typhoon ladder truck. It'll be 103-foot platform. I think that, that truck will be able to serve us for, for many years. And as I said, they, they've gone, they're, they're getting quite expensive. And actually, we were working together with the company and all that because they were telling me as we were working this that there's going to be a price increase in November. So, you know, anything we delay now, it'll be at least 6% more, which will come to about $140,000 in, in just another month. So, the price of the ladder is $2,315,500 for that.
Uh, one thing to be aware of, this, this is a scheduled replacement. We, when Tina first came along, one of the first things she did, which was very prudent, and has really helped us maintain our financial stability, is she, she came up with a long-range plan, a 20-year plan on major capital purchases, equipment purchases, and so on, so that we know what is the average lifespan of a piece of equipment, and when is that going to be due to be replaced. And so, you can strategically plan ahead on, you know that in five years, this is going to happen, in eight years, in 10 years, and so on. The, the truck, we, well, like Jeremy said, we've, we tried to extend it as far as we can extend it. Now, one thing to keep in mind, when we, if you all vote to order this thing tonight, we won't have it for another three and a half years. It takes that long to build it. And so, and you don't pay for it until you take possession of it. So, this is down the line. This is three and a half, possibly longer years down the line before we'll be actually be paying for and taking possession of this truck. So, of course, Mr. Reagan understands that. He's, he's ordered them and went and watched them grow and, and go through the process in the past. But it, you know, it amazed me not when, when I first become aware of how long it takes to get a fire truck out, you know, what a long-grown-out process it is to get one. But just for the record, we, if, if we move forward, and it would be my recommendation that we do that, it'll be three and a half years at least before you'll see a new truck roll into town, a new ladder truck. And, and we don't have to pay for it until we take possession of it. So, I just wanted that to be on the record.
What will we do with the current ladder truck? Will we get a new one? Is it spellable? Or...
Well, here, the, the, what I'm looking at, the prices and things today, you're looking at about $20,000 for two and a half million dollar that we're going to purchase that's on it. The thing is, is if it's not, if it's not going to be, if it's not in bad shape or anything, still operational, I'd like to have it as a, as a, as a backup truck. There's so many things with it, still tactical reasons of having it. And it's, one thing is just having a ladder truck at a station in a location that's coverage will help also part of our ISO and part of our things, too, that's, that's with it. But, you know, it just depends on what comes up, what, when it's, it's, you know, roughly four years out. So, we may know, we may know what, what, what we would need to do with it then. I've discussed some other options that we, you know, we might, might, could do with the ladder, you know, if it's, if it works out to where it doesn't affect as much with ISO or anything like that, we may donate it to another one. But I want someone that's going to be able to maintain it and keep it in, and then help us if we were to, if we were to need a ladder. And if, if we have another warehouse fire like we had, you know, it would be great to have two ladders. But, but it is good to have a reserve that we can train on, we can, we can do. And even, like I said, you just gain points just having it in a, in a station.
Jeremy and I have talked about this at length, and, you know, we, like, like he mentioned, you've got to have somebody that can maintain it. And that doesn't mean just keeping it polished. That means keeping it inside. You can't let them sit outside. They'll run. There's too much stuff on them that the sun, dry rods, and the weather destroys on them. You have to keep them inside. And not every, you know, we've got a lot of great volunteer departments here. There's no question about that. But we are concerned that none of them will have a building they can put it in. We, we've got a kind of plan of action on we're going, who we're going to approach and go about it to see, does anybody have a facility that will hold it, or would they be interested in building something that would hold it? So, that's, that's going to be our first plan of action on trying to look at it. You know, one of the things that we look at when we replace especially very expensive pieces, you know, it all goes into the insurance, you know, the insurance covers everything. And so, if you've got an expensive piece of equipment and you've got another expensive come in to replace that, and you don't replace that, well, your insurance goes up because now you're insuring two of those. So, you know, we have to look at those kinds of, you know, the bit, you know, that's, that's Tina's forte there. She's got to look at that, you know, what, how does, how does keeping that affect our insurance numbers? So, that's something she's got to look at and make sure that doesn't put us in the bind. But, you know, but we would like to hang on to it. We're always about having a spire because, you know, you've got to have spires. If, if the, if you only got one or something and it goes down for an exten-, especially for an extended period of time, now you've got none. And if you have an emergency or a situation, then you're, you're scrambling trying to figure out how you're going to deal with it because you don't have the piece of equipment that you need. So, it's a... So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a give-and-take kind of thing, is it worth the expense of paying more to the insurance or, or what? You know, we just have to evaluate a lot of different things that come into play on that, when, when it comes down to that. Now, one thing that Tina said she'd like to get into the record is that this will be a short-term lease when we, when we get this. It's still considered debt, you know, we've been leasing vehicles for some time now and, but from the comptroller and the auditors point, now, correct me if I misspeak on something because I'm, I'm as well versed in this as you are, but from their point of view, it's all debt, you know, it's just like a loan. They see, from the financial impact standpoint, they see no difference in a loan or a lease, it's still a payment that you owe every month or semi-annually or whatever. And so it's still considered debt and you have to carry it as debt, and so you have to report it as debt, if you decide to try to borrow any other money and, and your audit report. So it will be considered, even if we do a lease, it will be considered short-term debt. So she wanted, is that, is that, is that everything?
We do need to bid it out also.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that, yeah, she told me that and I forgot it.
And that's a big change, used to we could just go with the lease option that the vendor provided, because typically they come with that, and it's a recent change relatively that we can no longer do so, and you do have to match the life of the loan to the life of the asset, of course, but they want to do pre-approval. So you have to get approval from the comptroller's office before you bid it, and then you have to get approval after you bid it, so it's added some time, you know, a little bit extra to it. So that changes, that was a big change.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
No, 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 I mean, that part's, need to be understood.
And one thing too, I didn't mention, it's a source well contract bid on that too.
Even though it's a lease, Tina, will you, would we have to accrue every fiscal year?
No, just at one time.
Just one time?
Yeah.
Does it fit in the firehouse?
We will have to, we've already, we've had it in the budget for the last three years and the number keeps jumping up on us, but we've, we've been planning on expanding Station Two. Originally, to start with, we were looking at adding one bay, now we're looking at adding two bays, one of which will be big enough to handle the new truck. The new truck will not fit into the Station One where the old truck is because of the height, and you, and Randy understands, when you come out, you immediately go up a ramp, and that elevates the top when you hit that, when the front hits that ramp, and so that pushes that up into the roof. And this truck is higher than the old truck. The old truck, they had to, they had to modify the, the door on it to get it in and out, and it, you can't modify it anymore. So we're gonna have to build a, we'll have to build a bay over on Station Two for it to fit in. We've got that in the budget.
Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion.
We got some of that in the budget, let me be clear, we've got part of it in the budget, but the number keeps going up, but we think that we can get back in budget on it. We've been pursuing options from, built, from builders, it'd have to be bid out, but we, we found an avenue that assures us they can get that number down, so we'll see.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on, on the board then for consideration of bids for a ladder truck for the fire department, has been properly seconded, we need a roll call.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Last Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I would like to say, the previous fire chief didn't spend news.
I'll go along with that.
You retired before you had to.
I wish the previous fire chief would have bought the fire, the ladder truck, that would have been.
I, I can say, the 1973 pump that we gave Longstreet, Chief Butler told us we paid $38,000 in '73.
Wow.
The ladder we've got now from '93, '94, we paid $397,000. So that's how much it is.
All right. Item 11 is comments from citizens, is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on any, any item? Hearing none, we entertain a motion for a adjournment?
Yeah.
We are adjourned.